Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting for the city of San Juan at 6:00 PM. May we rise for invocation, Mr. Hona Quiros? Face the flag for a pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, staff committee members. The first item on the agenda, Mayor Commissioner, we have presentations. Tonight we have a presentation recognizing Alejandro Reyes as he has been selected to represent the USA National University Team at the Pan Am University Games in Cali, Colombia this November. Tonight with us, we have Master Fabian Cortez to talk about this young individual that has made it to play those games. So if you don't mind coming over and talk about this fantastic student that you have.
Good afternoon. My name is Fabian Cortez. I'm the master of Warrior Stack Wando. I opened my schools since 2004 here. I started originally here. I graduated from Donna, Texas, pero all my years, I've been 20 years way into Wando martial arts. And I started Business 83 in Nebraska. There's a, creo que era un testigo de jugar que abrieron ahí un tiempo. Ahí comencé. Back in the days, it was moon ross, karate. I started there when I was 19 years old. Este, then I moved with the flower shop just turning around the corner. There was a flower shop right on the corner. I just moved a couple of, not even feet away. And I stayed there and then I would move 495 and Cesar Chavez. And right now you have your school, Raúl Longoria passing 495, Taquería La Mexicana, right in front of it. We got two suites there. Este, and I'm proud to say that we have a gentleman, we have a gentleman from University of UTRGB Panamericana back in the days, that he's going to represent the United States in the Pan Am Games, Pan Am Games, university games, which is, for us, is a big thing because Olympics are there four years, every four years. And then you have world championships every two years. And then they have the, which is Olympic Games, university games every four, and then we have the Pan Am Games every two years. It's the first and only one in the whole history of the valley that he's going to represent USA and raise and war in the valley. So it's a, it's a big thing for us. And he's a nice humble kid that, right now, we're having a little bit of trouble for his, we're fundraising something. I'm doing chicken plates. I'm donating everything that we can actually go and have the trip. It's going to be not this weekend, next weekend, we're going to have those plates selling that way he can represent. And we're here. I've been mating 15 national team members here in the valley. There's only 17 people. From all the way from Houston, Texas, all the way over here. There are 17 people. We got 15 people representing the United States from our San Juan, Texas. There's one in Brasville and one from Laredo. And I put a kid in youth Olympic Games, two world championships, six Pan American championships, and we got this young man right here. So we're proud to say we're here from San Juan and we're going to represent the USA. So everything that, you know, I would just want to say, you know what, we're here and we try to expand the word because everything, there's a little, the name, the things that the services, aquel pegó, aquel robó, aquí están todas las noticias. And this young man, there's no credit also. Everything I want to say, just, we're here and, and, and we're part of it. And thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Can I say something? I wanted to thank you for this presentation for me. It's for me an honor to represent the valley because they have welcomed me since I was 13 and I moved here. It has always been my goal to inspire other kids to follow, to follow their dreams and to make it happen. It's not easy, but it is worth it. So thank you so much for having me here. That's it. Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Before you leave, I just want to say congratulations. That's a great honor for you to have been, you know, selected and made it to the, to this stage. So congratulations. It's a huge honor. We're honored to have you represent our city, our small city here in San Juan, here in Texas, and we're very honored also. So congratulations on such a wonderful, wonderful thing that you're going to be doing. So we wish you all the best of luck. And I can just tell by your personality and how you spoke up here that you have a great future ahead of you. And I've always said, all athletes, coachable athletes make successful, productive adults in our community. So I know you will do well in all that you do. And again, just congratulations.
If you can maybe get with our city manager or city secretary and give us that information in reference to your benefit, the barbecue that you're doing, the fundraiser, so that way we can put it in all our social media outlets and, yeah, we can really push that and maybe, you know, invite the community that they can go over next, you said next Saturday, right?
Yeah, it's going to be the next week, which is, it's going to be a Sunday.
Sunday? Okay, yeah.
I mean, we're going to be there.
Yeah, if you can, if you can just give us that information and get with our city secretary Brenda, and so that way we can take care of that. So once again, congratulations, son. Keep up the hard work, you know, it's, you know, that line of sport, you know, not anybody can do that, you know. Obviously, we're known football, baseball, basketball, but what you're doing right now, I know where to find you in case Commissioner Markey gets out of hand. I'll make sure I call you. I'm joking.
Happens often.
I'm joking. Well, good luck, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Moving on, Mayor Commissioner, we have another presentation on proclamation recognizing Eddie Sebaos of Sanchez Family Ranch for his outstanding community contributions.
I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. Recognizing Eddie Sebaos Sanchez Family Ranch, whereas Eddie Sebaos, son of Diamantina and Pedro Sebaos of San Juan, graduated from PSJ High School in 1996. And whereas Eddie Sebaos, owner of San Juan Family Ranch, I'm sorry, the Sanchez Family Ranch Productions LLC, son-in-law of the Sanchez Family and event coordinator for the Sanchez Family Ranch, which was established in 2017. And whereas the Sanchez Family Ranch partnered with the Idaho County Sheriff's Crime Prevention Unit and is a nonprofit organization with the South Texas Christmas Tree Project. And whereas since November 2023, they have partnered with the Food Bank of the Rio Grande Valley Incorporated to provide food distributions twice a month, which have assisted over 22,000 families. And whereas since partnering with other organizations, they have hosted numerous community events, including toy and turkey drives, tree donations, National Night Out, Halloween, and Christmas events, among many other giveaways. And whereas the Sanchez Family Ranch established the first community pumpkin patch in the city of San Juan, bringing in nearly 2,000 visitors weekly during the fall season. And whereas, on behalf of the city commission, we would like to express our gratitude to Eddie Sebaos Sanchez Family Ranch for his outstanding community contributions and engagement. Now, therefore, be bestowed, restored that Mayor Mario Garza, by the power vested in him as the mayor of the city of San Juan, along with Mayor Pro Tem Marco Marqui Villegas, Commissioner Nato Wahado, Commissioner Dina Santillán, and Commissioner Jesse Ramirez, hereby issue this proclamation to Eddie Sebaos on this 13th day of August 2024.
First of all, I want to say thank you to, to the city, the community. It's, it brings me joy to see all the volunteers, my parents and my in-laws, the Sanchez family, and my wife and my kids supporting, you know, supporting this. And it starts the excitement to see the youth helping out the community. Everybody coming together and we work as a team. It's, it's, it's hot in the mornings and, and it's, it's a little struggle, but you know, at the end, it all pays off. It's a good feeling. We all have a, you know, big heart that, you know, what we do. And it's just, it seems like it's, it's getting bigger and bigger and, and that's, that's good, you know, there's, as long as the food, food bank has availability and we, we do the, we do the rest, you know. But I thank you for, for your time and, and the city and doing this for the community. It's a good joy. Thank you.
Moving on, Mayor Commissioners, we have, the next one is on the presentations. We have presentation on departmental reports. Tonight we have pretty much every single department and every single director is here. Should you have any questions for them, Mayor Commissioners?
Yes, sir, go ahead. Mr. De Heena is not here. Ms. Monica, lucky you. I was looking at the report on page eight, and I'm looking at the numbers, the dollar amounts. It shows that there was 87 building permits and the amount of 3,865,000. And then 18 building permits for new houses in the same amount. Is that correct? Or is that a typo? Okay. If we can get that updated, what's wrong? I was like, wow, we need a lot of money.
Questions?
Real quick, on the speed bumps that we have, do we have any more? Or is there any order? What's the plan?
Don't have any, but we, we are, we're about to order.
We're about to order? Okay, we have nothing stopped?
We have an order and we're trying to see where we can get the, I think we talked about it sometime last week, ordering 12 sets, so.
If those, those other thin ones, those can be moved if need be, once they're already set down?
Any of them can be moved.
I've got some calls and concerns on the, getting to the school, right? Crossing Cesar Chavez. Then we have one, then we have another one on the other. We have one on each side of the school, which is needed. But there's one that's further down, just kind of like by itself in the street. And then we have concerns with people wanting one. I've got complaints about that one because it's by itself. It's not near the school anymore. If you go so many feet past.
Further.
Yes, the furthest one, heading east, yes.
I think the school was the one that wanted that one there due to the sidewalk. There's no sidewalk, so cars were going around through the grass and two kids almost got hit.
On that last one?
Yes.
Okay, because I got concerned about that.
So we're trying to, they were trying, the school wanted to slow down the traffic before they hit that little piece because of the kids. Yeah, it's further up.
Maybe we can take a look at that. It was just a suggestion to see, to see, expedite and get, because we got some concerns in some neighborhoods and we never got any track on that.
Also looking to the fact of building them out of asphalt.
Can we do that?
Yeah, yes, sir. And they last for years.
Why don't we do that?
It's a lot cheaper. Well, we need to get the pat molder. It's a pattern molder. It's not very expensive, but just to, so we can work the, the hot mix. Well, we already tried it with a little piece and it worked, so we're, we're trying to see we can get those. And that saves the asphalt too.
And then an update on the potholes on some of our key areas. We need to make sure that when they're get called in or whatever, that we expedite and get those fixed. That's one thing that the community lacks. And if you go, and it's not only here, it's everywhere with the rain and stuff like that, the streets. But that's one thing that we do need to immediately handle. Tires get blown out or stuff, whatever, like that, but those are pretty bad. Those that are in need to handle them real quick. So that's, we're good. Thank you.
Just the reason I'm asking because some neighbors being called in that people are still building carports without permits. And instead of being steel, they're still making them out of wood. I don't know, maybe the people are not getting all the information where it's supposed to be built, you know, it's supposed to be built out of metal. Maybe is there anything that we can do or open it up there for the, for the city to let them know people that, you know, we need to follow through with permits and all that?
So, so yes, so one of the things is that we do have a code enforcer during the weekends. However, when somebody needs to do a, some sort of a carport, that's when we let them know as to what the materials needs to be used. Now, we can also put them online, but I think it's just preferably so that they, when they come in, we'll let them know exactly what the materials needs to be used for. But we do have a code enforcement on weekends. It's through sanitation department.
First, I know we've had a lot of weedy lots. I know it's hard to keep up. I know it's between parks and you guys. I know with the rain, it's kind of gotten a little bit out of control. But if we need to put some of those notices out there, let's do that between the two, you know, that the, the private properties need to cut those weedy lots. I know we were doing it in our neighborhood, but there are some other neighborhoods that also need to be addressed because it's just causing more mosquitoes and those are the calls that I'm getting too. And it's throughout the city. It's just the private properties. But if we could just address those as we need to.
Now, as far as the carports, depending on the subdivision, because we do have a, an ordinance or some.
So it varies. So it may be metal or wood. You can build them both. It just depends what the subdivision is. Yeah.
So it's just done case by case?
Right, pretty much.
That's on the, the only, I mean, the question I have in reference to, I know the lady earlier, Mrs. Trevino, made a comment in reference to the cemetery road, Moore Road. So I know that we've been on that road for several years already. And just to let everyone know that that road does not belong to the city of San Juan. It belongs to the irrigation district. And I know we've been working very hard to try to get something done. I know the latest we got with Mr. Eddie Cantu and Mr. Roy Garcia. And can you share a little bit about what Mr. Roy Garcia had mentioned in reference to that road, sir?
I had a conversation with him last week. It died. It's dead. It's, does not belong to the city. It doesn't belong to county. It's not a road. It is an easement that belongs to the Ivallo County Irrigation Canal. And pretty much the irrigation canal said, no, do not touch my road. It's not a road. It's an easement. I don't want you on there. We did have some discussions. One, possibly heavy equipment might damage any of their lines running through. Two is that we don't know how strong and healthy the canal banks are, and it's very expensive to repair them. So to, for it to become a road, it needs to be whitened to a certain degree, which it does not allow us because of the bodies that are buried inside the cemetery. So that road used to be, back in the day, made out of caliche or dirt, whatever it was. I remember caliche as far as I can go back. At one point or another, somebody decided to put some pavement. It wasn't the city. It wasn't Eddie Cantu, obviously. So whoever did it, did it on their own, at their own expense, and it became a road because once, or it became similar to a road because of the stop signs. Now, stop signs are not supposed to be there. We do have them there because of accidents that have happened in the past. Two things that can, we can do that Roy and I talked. The cemetery can build their access road through the back, which they got property, and there is a road that was closed back there. Or we close up that road completely from the curb and Moore, and intersection of San Antonio, and nobody goes in and out. But then again, you're going to kill the cemetery. So it's, it's not a no-go at this point. Now, we're not giving up. We're still trying to communicate. I got Mr. Hona involved and we talked, so.
As far as the MOU with the county, the county's with us, right?
The MOU was.
We're together, us and the county. We step in, although it's not ours.
The MOU went to county level. They went to the courts.
So county's okay with it. It's just the irrigation district.
It was shut down at the irrigation board. That, those are the people that shut us down. It passed over there, but it didn't go through with the irrigation board.
And you think, based on those, you think that there's still a chance we can sit down with them and try to?
Roy and I, Roy and I are not giving up. And I know, I got Mr. Hona involved. He's been helping me communications, you know.
Have they come out and looked at it?
They, sir, we can't even.
No, I'm asking you, to your knowledge, have they come out and looked at it?
I know of, no, sir.
Okay. And they have, I'm sorry. They've gone over. And the.
I don't see how somebody in professional or any entity can see, say, I'd even like.
The problem is that, like he mentioned, the county was all for it. It took us a while before they actually went before the commissioners' court, got it approved. We're ready to move on that. However, irrigation district decided not to because they don't know in what condition those, the canal is at. So having go through the heavy equipment may, may damage that canal. And we don't know how costly that's going to be, so they decided not to. They say, no, don't touch my road now. Is there maybe open dialogue with this gentleman? Yes, there is. However, at this point, they're saying, no, don't touch my road.
Then maybe we need to get the county judge involved and have a sit-down meeting with him and get whoever's responsible for that road. Because I mean, I've even seen buses go through there, school buses, and it's, it's crazy. It's crazy.
And they're already complaining. They already called me about the school buses. They just have too many holes and the buses are, their tires are being worn out. Mr. Zail Garza, you know where the canal leaves, right in the corner, right? It's when they turn the canal. I don't know if there used to be an alley right behind them, because it looks like a little entrance to the back. But I don't know if it stops there at the fence or it's on the outside on the back side. I mean, I really don't know.
I know that there's a road in the back of the canal property.
Yeah.
That is closed off because of the dump in back in the day. They closed it off, so it got all brushy, which divides the oil field and the property of canal.
Right behind their, their home. It's not close to the oil field over there.
I'm not familiar with that road.
Because last time that I was driving that way, you know, I saw like a little entrance. Maybe, I guess it probably stopped at the fence, the cemetery. I mean, I don't know.
I've never been down that road, sir. I haven't even, I've actually haven't looked there. It's too brushy, so.
Yeah. I mean, what else? I mean, maybe it's another, make another entrance or something because, I mean, I mean, that road is real bad.
I wouldn't, who's, I don't even know who to talk to.
Like you mentioned, in the back, we'd have privilege to that. That would be our, I mean, the irrigation district won't be able to.
No, no, not on the back because it belongs to the city.
Yeah, I think the road, the road belongs to county, doesn't it?
It's right behind where they.
I believe it's Conway.
Conway. Conway. No, no, Conway's still back. No, no, no. It's before. It's before that. There's like a little road that goes in there. Now, I don't know. It used to be an alley before, back in the old days, because I used to go through that rabbit's down there. But I know there was, but I don't know. It stopped at, at the cemetery or it's right beside the cemetery. I really don't know. Just, if you have a time, just go by and check it. I mean, I'm not saying, you know.
We can look into that and see what we can determine on that.
Or something.
Sure.
Any other questions?
One more.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Enriquez, as far as the collections, I know that you compared 2023 to the current year. And for June, it was 38,000 in 2023 and 18 in 2024. And I look at the citations compared to 2023 and 2024, June of '23 was 89 citations and June of 2024 is 118. Do you, do you know why the, the big gap in, in revenue as far as collections is?
Last year, we had our amnesty extended and.
During that time?
During the summer. And that did bring more revenue with the warrant, even though we had more tickets this year, but, and less last year, but it was.
That's what helped, man. Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move on. Thank you, sir.
Moving on, Mayor Commissioners, on the public hearing in ordinances, we have a hold the public hearing, consider an ordinance providing for the conditional use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages, BQ wine and malt beverages, retail dealers off-premise at the Dollar General Store located 100 East FM 495, legally described as lot three, Cantu Plaza subdivision, as requested by Dodging Corp of Texas Inc.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The first public hearing is a conditional use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages, one MVG, for off-premise consumption at the Dollar Store Market located at corner of Raúl Longoria and 495, where the CBS Pharmacy was located before. The zoning around the area is commercial, and we have Junior Supermarket to the east, a convenience store to the north, a commercial plaza to the south, and to the west, El Pato Restaurant. The proposed operation hours are Sunday through, through Saturday from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The applicant needs to comply with the TABC requirements and attach to the packet. You can, you have a list of all the standard requirements, a site plan, letter from the applicant, and information from the TABC. A notice was published in the advance newspaper and letters were mailed out to 14 property owners within the 200 food radius, and no comments were received in favor or against the request. This is a public hearing, and now this matter is before you.
I'm going to go ahead and open this up at 6:43 PM. Is there anyone here for or against, for or against? Any questions, members of the commission? If not, I'll close this up at 6:43 PM. Is there a motion approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item is hold a public hearing, consider an ordinance providing for the conditional use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages, EMBG wine and malt beverages, retailers on premise permit at La Curva Taqueria located 2912 North Raúl Longoria Road, legally described as lots 12, 8, 13, and 13, 8. North Gate Manor Phase 1 subdivision is requested by La Curva Taqueria LLC. Ms. Gomez?
This is another conditional use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages, but this is on premise consumption. They will be selling or offering alcohol as a complement of the food that being served. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Sunday from 11:00 AM to midnight. We have a commercial plaza to the north, a restaurant to the south, to the east, we have the middle school, and also to the west, we have a subdivision, North Gate Manor subdivision. The applicant needs to comply with the TABC requirements along with the city requirements. We send a copy, a letter to the property owners around the 200 food radius. We send 15 letters. No comments were received in favor or against the request. The staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit as presented, and this is a public hearing.
This time I'm going to open it up at 6:45 PM. Is there anyone here for or against, for or against? Any questions, members of the commission? If not, I'll close this at 6:45 PM. Is there a motion approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item C, hold a public hearing, consider an ordinance providing for the conditional use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages, wine and malt beverages, retailers on premise side, permit at San Juan Food Truck Park located 2506 North Raúl Longoria Road, legally described as lot one, with this subdivision, as requested by La Curva Taqueria LLC. Ms. Gomez?
This is a conditional for the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption at the food truck park, the San Juan SJ Food Truck Park, which is located north of Raúl Longoria, just off Eldora Road. The applicant is La Curva Taqueria LLC, is the same property owners for Taqueria La Curva. To the north, we have a vacant property. To the south, we have a new development for apartment units. To the east, the commercial plaza, and to the west.
To the east, the commercial plaza, and to the west, storage units facility. The operation hours, the proposed operation hours are seven days a week, from 10:00 a.m. to midnight. Attached to the packet, there is a list of requirements, and they need to comply with this list of requirements, along with the TABC requirements. The staff is recommending approval, so you're subject to comply to the attached report, and also a notice was published in the advance, and we sent letters to 17 property owners, and no comments were received in favor or against the request. And this is also a public hearing.
Up at 6:46 p.m. Is there anyone here for or against, or against? Any questions, members of the commission? If not, I'll close this at 6:46 p.m. Is there a motion to approve? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
The next item is a hold of public hearing, consider an audience providing for the recently request from single-family residence district RS to multifamily residence district RMF of lots 7 and 8, Miller RS subdivision, located approximately 4 miles west from Cesar Chavez Road, along the south side of Carroll Road, is requested by Cesar E. Solano. Ms. Gomez.
This is a recent request from potential to multifamily. They are proposing to recently Point 25 acre tract located along Carroll Road. There are two lots, 50 by 110 each lot, which is approximately 11,000 square feet, which do not meet the standard requirements for multifamily lots, which is 22,500. Attached to the packet, you can have a table, you have a table, will establish the requirements for multifamily, a survey to the property, and the staff is recommending denial of the request based on the lot size, and will be considered as flat zoning. A notice was published in the advance. We sent letters to nine property owners around the 200 food radius, and no comments were received in favor or against the request. Staff is recommending denial of the recent request.
I'm gonna open it up at 6:48 p.m. Is there anyone here for or against, for or against?
Buenos dias, buenas tardes.
Nombres, señor.
Nombres, Jesús Padilla, y vengo en representación del señor Cesar Solano, que por motivos de salud pide una disculpa por no ser presente. Y es con motivo de solicitar la autorización para llevar a cabo un proyecto multifamiliar aquí en 11, 12, Carlos Estel, lot 7 y 8. La cuestión de todo esto es que hemos visto que en estos años la gente utiliza mucho esa propiedad para tirar basura, y yo creo que es una zona que requiere de otro tipo de presentación, y hemos decidido poder, poder unirnos a, al cambio también de San Juan. Ya lo hemos hecho anteriormente, enfrente del Audi atrás está una subdivisión, y hemos estado también construyendo proyectos que ya, ya están terminados, ya fueron vendidos, y les damos muchas gracias por todas las facilidades y en la gestión que hicimos y todo, cómo fuimos atendidos por la ciudad para poder llevar a cabo todos estos proyectos, y queremos continuar ahí en esa dirección que he citado, y pues bueno, sabemos que es de beneficio para San Juan también en directa o indirectamente también, en finanzas y en muchos aspectos, ¿verdad? De cuestión de presentación de la ciudad debido al área también en que se encuentra esta propiedad muy cercana a lo que es Walmar y todo ese centro comercial. Entonces, agradecemos, por favor, que nos permitan y autoricen este proyecto multifamiliar que estamos con todo el deseo de llevarlo a cabo e invertir, seguir invirtiendo aquí en San Juan. Por ese motivo, solicitamos de su apoyo y su autorización para este proyecto. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. Anyone else, for or against? Any questions, members of the commission?
Mayor, may I?
Go ahead, sir, yes, sir.
Ms. Monica, I know this is your last item, but I did notice that none of these have any feedback from the planning and zoning board. Do they not go, any of these go through the planning and zoning?
Yes, I'm sorry, the planning and zoning approve all the previous, but this that we're zoning by the planning and zoning department.
Yes, I was looking for those notes, and I didn't see any, so that's why.
You're talking about the minutes?
The minutes, yes, from the planning and zoning board.
Yeah, on these it doesn't, the minutes are.
No, we don't, we don't have any minutes, I'm sorry.
I know in the past, we used to, they used to provide them.
Correct.
We can include it in them.
Please, and thank you. I don't know, is there any other questions?
What?
If not, Mayor, I would like to make a motion. The motion would be to approve the staff recommendation to deny the zoning request.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Your Commissioners. Next item under appointments, we have a considerably moving appointment appointments related to San Juan EDC Board, Ms. Escalante.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners.
Good evening, ma'am.
At this moment, we have the San Juan EDC Board. The corporation shall have a board of directors in which all powers of the corporation should be vested, and which all, and shall consist of seven directors, who serve the city for a two-year term. At this moment, I believe they're asking to, the removal and appointment of a new board member.
Yes, sir.
This time for the EDC, I'm gonna go ahead and remove Lenny Sanchez, replaced by Jesse Ramirez, and also removal of Archie Flores, being replaced by Eli Santian, Elisa, Elisa Santian.
Second.
Lenny hadn't been removed?
No.
No? Oh, okay, okay. So, there's a motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item, Mayor Commissioners, we have considered removing an appointment of board members related to the San Juan Library Advisory Board.
Yes, once again, we have the, at this moment, the staff is recommending the removal of one board member to the San Juan Memorial Library Advisory Board as Janelle Peña. She will no longer be able to assist or to the meetings, assist to the meetings.
And nobody submitted a?
Just one, with it's.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry.
Crystal Narro.
I'll make a recommendation to remove Janelle Peña and Eli Santian, and appoint Maria Estela Ayala and Christina Garza.
Sorry, to remove Eli Santian and Janelle Peña, and appoint Maria Estela Ayala and Christina Garza.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item is considering removing appointment of board members related to the Keeps San Juan Beautiful Board.
Mayor Commission, at this moment, staff is recommending the removal and appointment of two new members for the Keeps San Juan Beautiful Board. As Ms. Jennifer Villarreal, she has resigned the board, and we have Ms. Laura Fonseca, due to her absenteeism, has been missing a few meetings for the Keeps San Juan Beautiful Board, and staff is recommending the removal of her board. And there's, I believe in your packets, there was a few who, members that have applied.
Mayor, may I?
Sure.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Eric Wahardo in place of Jennifer Villarreal, and to appoint Raquel Jimenez in the place of Laura Fonseca.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That's it, right?
Thank you.
For appointments?
The next item, Mayor Commissioners, we have discussion and possible action to contract TriMed Consultants LLC to provide engineering services on a new water, wastewater comprehensive master plan for the city, Mr. Juan Carlos.
Mayor Commissioner, discussion possible action to contract TriMed Consultants LLC to provide engineering services on a new water and wastewater comprehensive master plan. TriMed Consultants LLC will be doing a full assessment of the city's infrastructure, data collection, calculation, analysis, and updating the water and sanitary sewer maps. The comprehensive master plan will cover the water plant, water distribution system, wastewater treatment plant, lift stations, and sanitary sewer collection system. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions for Mr.?
Mayor, may I? As far as the budget amount, the 225,000, was that budgeted for in this, in this current budget?
Already budgeted.
See, 225? Now, with that being said, and I'm assuming this is starting from scratch, brand new?
The master plan that we have right now is from 2011, so it's already outdated. We need a new master plan due to all the development, all the growth in the city.
And is that something that can be used at all, in your opinion?
It's supposed to be updated every five years, and at 10 years, it's recommended to just do a new one.
So, do you know, we, five years ago, we made the master plan, any?
Ben missed an adjustment, most likely.
No.
Has tried, did they, this one is going automatic, based on the rotation, or?
Yes.
Based on the rotation? So, then, based on the rotation, he's the only one that has looked at this. Nobody else has looked at this, at the, at the current plan, to see if it's.
Oh, what was that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, based on, on the fact that you're going on rotation. He's the only one, has he looked at this plan or no? The current, the current master plan that we have in place.
The master plan was done by Cruz Hogan back in 2011.
Correct, but has he looked at the current one?
Yes.
And he can't use it at all, Mr. Rick?
Yes, for the record, good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Mayor Protan. We've looked at the master plan. For some reason, there is a lot of information in the master plan, but the master plan wasn't completed, so you have an incomplete master plan. It was never signed, and signed by the engineer. So, the master plan has been used as, has been used as it's, as it's been submitted, but it is not a signed document yet. Excuse me? The 20. Or the one that I took? Yes.
All those, regardless, Commissioner, those are, whether it was signed or not, I'm assuming, I think it was signed if it was presented over to us or back to the commission back in the day, 2011. However, every five years has to be updated, everything used needs to be renewed.
But I understand the updated part. What I'm saying is, do we have to start from scratch?
Not necessarily they have to start from scratch, whatever was done, they're gonna add to that. Now, they're, they're gonna be revisiting those lines that were proposed back in the day to see whether it may be eating, I'm assuming, a bigger pipe, or whatever the case may be. But along with that, they're gonna be looking at that very closely, along with the new growth on the city. Right, sir.
But a new one needs to be made regardless.
The master plan is, it depends how long the engineer looks into the future with the master plan.
How much work is gonna exist?
Consideration of the wastewater plant, the water plant will be analysis, and also the infrastructure, all the infrastructure, giving you estimates on how to go, how the city is supposed to grow from point eight to then, to the next 15, 20 years.
Two of those updated within the 10 years?
Yes, like the city of far, we did the city of far. It's been 10 years since that master plan was done. They were giving the next dollar amount, and they're about 50% of that master plan. We were able to give them all the infrastructure that they needed. We ran models, we ran calculations for the water plant and sewer plant. So, now they're going through the, through the process and, and constructing what's on the master plan. So, we would be giving you all that information so that you, you understand how the city needs to grow in reference to the sewer and the water.
And he's gonna help us out for the next, for the future use?
Yes, it, 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 the master plan could be 20 years in the future. So, we're gonna look at all those, those, those analyses. There's, there's some projects, of course, that are gonna be, that are gonna be, because, I mean, infrastructure just breaks and stuff like that. But the core of what the city needs to move forward is gonna be in that master plan.
And as far as the timeline, by when will you have it complete?
We anticipate in about six months, we should have something. We would need to visit all, with all staff, with the water and sewer, and the collections guys, and, and the guys that, that do the water lines and all that stuff, so that we could understand the infrastructure that you have.
So, if you can use the old plant, if it's possible, there won't be any issues as far as one company having done it, like it was released to the city, so.
We could look at it, yes. We could look at it, yes, most definitely.
Any other questions? Staff, staff, we're good, staff? No objections, staff? That being said, is there a motion approved?
So good.
Second. That's been second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Next item, discussion and possible action to approve a rehabilitation of water plant number one by TIPS vendor CB3 Consulting. Consultants funding is available under the American Rescue Plan. Mr. Martinez.
Water plant one tube sub settler system, baffle walls, wheel pedal system, and well pump have exceeded their life expectancy, also due to the city's growth equipment needs to, to be upgraded to comply with TCEQ requirements and keep with demand, keep up with demand. Right now, that water, water plant one, which is the one behind the old city hall, it's not in operation, it's out of service, been out of service for about a year already. Staff recommends approval.
And it says we're gonna be using the American Rescue Plan, so all that's already been allocated for, for the project.
Under present. Any other questions? If not, is there a motion approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
The next item is discussion and possible action to contract TriMed Consultants LLC to provide engineering services on a garage storage building at the water plant number one.
TriMed Consultants LLC will be collecting topographic data, conducting research, and reviewing relevant information, as well as preparing the plans and specifications. This project will consist of a 40 by 40 metal building to be constructed on the east part of the old city hall parking lot, and will be used to store material and equipment assigned to Water Distribution Division. Staff.
Questions?
Yes, Mayor May?
Yes, sir.
Again, if we're going on rotation, why is TriMed again?
So, it is not like projects on a rotation coming before the commission. These projects that are issued out at the city, at the, at the office, so it's just one of those that we.
It's whenever, whenever we started the project, it turned out that there wasn't any meetings last month, or. I mean, we've been working on the master plan for budget maybe since last October.
And I quit, because I did submit a request, both to you, Ben, and to Brenda, regarding these items. My concern was that, that I wanted to see if you all could provide me a list with the rotation, the dates, and how it's, it's working. I had submitted a request for, for staff to give me a list like.
Like a PIR?
For this one, well, yeah, that's what they consider, a public information request.
I mean, you should have, you should be privileged to get that information.
Right, and that's why I was asking for it, so that come this, these items, I would know, and I wouldn't be asking these questions here, but I didn't receive it.
Do we have to go through the PIR? Sorry? Do we have to go through that process, PIR? When there's something on agenda, we're gonna question it?
No, not necessarily, no. If you're needing information for, to be able to conduct city business, then.
That shouldn't be happening. I mean, especially any members of the commission should just request what they want, and they should just get it, without going through a PIR. I don't know who set that rule, but it shouldn't happen. Okay, so, so in the future, whoever requests any information, can you just go ahead and provide them, the members of the commission, okay? Brenda?
Got it.
Okay. All right.
So, do we, we, we haven't, we haven't?
Right, I mean.
Yeah, you're not done, go ahead.
No, 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 I'm done.
By the parking area.
It's still part of the whole facility and the whole.
Right, it's part of the facility.
If we're gonna do upgrades or whatever, or change the whole, everything, right?
About six parking spaces on the north and south side.
Any questions? Any other questions? Now, is there a motion approved?
To move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, sir.
Next item, we have a discussion and possible action to approve emergency repairs to two sewer manholes along North Raul Longoria, and authorize city management to execute all related documents and budget amendments needed. Mr. Martinez.
Discussion, discussion and possible action to approve emergency repairs on two sewer manholes along North Raul Longoria in the amount of 123,550 dollars. And authorize to execute all related documents and budget amendments as needed. Manhole number one is at 2301 North Raul Longoria on the northbound lane. Manhole number two is at 2711 North Raul Longoria on the northbound lane. These repairs are necessary to preserve and protect the public health and safety of the residents of City San Juan. Staff requested quotes from three contractors with OMTB submitting the lowest quote. Staff recommends approval.
So we have three, and our lowest bidder was OMT Utilities. Have you worked with them before?
They did the Tierra del Palma water line improvement, and they did the Sargento Trevino sewer line improvement also.
And you had no issues with them, they worked well with the city, or was there issues with that came about?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Was there any issues with the construction? Was there any issues working with them?
They actually did the emergency repairs on Lift Station Five and Twenty-Two back in June, I believe, and, I mean, no complaint, I mean, everything is, yes.
Mayor, there's no other comments, I motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, under item E, we have discussion and consideration toward the RFQ number 24-011-07-08, engineering services to the most qualified engineering firm. Mr. Martinez.
Good evening, Mayor Commission. On June 19, 2024, and June 26, 2024, staff advertised in the advance journal to solicit proposals for RFQ number 240110708 for engineering services. On July 11, 2024, a bid opening was held, and sealed proposals were received from the following engineers. Javier Inojosa Engineering out of McAllen, TriMed Consultants out of Far, La Fever Engineering from Port Mansfield, Seames Incorporated from McAllen, Consort from McAllen, and Cruz Hogan Engineering from Westlaco, and Singular Winston Greenwood from Westlaco. The engineers are here to do a presentation, if you like, they're looking at, what, three, three minutes?
Mayor of the commission, whether they wanna hear presentation, I think you're fairly new, know pretty much everyone, up to you, Mayor. I think pretty much everybody's here, and the engineers that are here are pretty much well-known by everyone, so it's up to you all how you all wanna do it, whether you wanna presentation, or pretty much select the ones that you feel that are most?
And right now, we have three on rotation, correct?
We have three on rotation, yes.
We have three on rotation. Do you recommend we stay with three?
It's up to the board, to the commission.
Okay.
I know we had four before, based on amount of work.
We had four before.
We've had four before, and the way the city's growing, we need another one. That's my opinion, but I don't know, I guess we'll worry about that. But going back to the, to these firms, I know that we get our packet early, and I don't know if you guys reviewed them, but my recommendation is just to go ahead and, we've seen the majority of all these individuals, these businesses, these firms, what kind of work they've done in the past, and even present, and I think we should just go ahead and, I mean, decide, you know, as a commission and whole, to see who, you know, should come back on the rotation or, but I do, you know, like Mayor Protan Marky was mentioning, I really think we need another one as well, so cities have been growing, we've had four before, so I think we need a, you know, that's my recommendation, but I don't know, unless you guys wanna go through the, through the presentations, it's up to you. I mean, I'm fine whichever way you guys wanna handle this, but me personally, I've seen pretty much everyone's work, I've seen what, you know, what they've done, and what they can do, so it's really up to the commission. If you wanna have them come up, what did you say, three, two minutes, or?
Three.
Or a minute, or? I'm joking, I'm joking.
It's usually three minutes.
Yeah, no, I'm joking, yeah, however you all wanna handle this.
If I may, Mayor, I've been out for three years, so some of these companies I haven't dealt with, if it's okay with you, can, I would like to make a motion to appoint at this time TriMed and Cruz Hogan, and then hold off to the next meeting so that I can get some information on the rest, if I can meet with Ben during the week and get information on the other ones, before we select the other two.
Okay, so what was that again?
The motion is to?
For TriMed?
To go with TriMed and Cruz Hogan.
Okay.
At this time.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, then let's, why don't we just hear everyone, then, and just, yeah, because I hate to bring this back.
Motion's been made and seconded, do?
There's a motion on the table, and you want to do a second?
Correct.
Okay, so then, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
There's a motion by the Senator.
Who, second?
By Dina.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, so we'll bring this back on the next. How long do you need?
For the next one, I'll meet with him during the week, and that way we can discuss the other, and then put it in the next.
So then, I guess on the next one, do we wanna have them present too, or?
No, no, no.
We're good?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Keep in mind, the city, it is growing at a very fast pace.
Yeah, correct. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
The next item, Mayor Commission, we have discussion, consider proposed tax rate for the City of San Juan for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2024, through September 30th, 2025, and set a public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Commission. In accordance with the property tax law, if the proper, the proposed tax rate of .6775 exceeds the unused increment rate of .6837, a record vote must be taken, and also schedule one public hearing. The public hearing will be scheduled for Tuesday, September 10th, 2024, at 6:00 PM. And the public hearing will be placed in the City San Juan Memorial Library Multi-Purpose Room, located at 1010 South Standard.
So I recommend, from staff myself, is to leave the tax rate the way it is, that it was last year. That'll give us a little bit of cushion for the future projects, but the, as you know, we're not raising any more property taxes, it's gonna stay the same for another fiscal year.
Any questions for Mr. Arhona or Mr. Leroy? No? Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Next item is discussion and possible action to prove the final floor plan layout of the new municipal court and new expansion public safety building. We have Mr. Vianola here.
Good evening, Mayor Commission. We did coordinate the floor plan changes with Judge Garza and Chief, so all those have been taken care of as of now, and this is the final floor plan that we have. Do you have it here, Pat?
There were minor changes. Lighter with the way that it came out.
So did you go through the, the plan, and what did you, your experience and your knowledge, what you think?
And I think what, what was recommended by us, and as well by them, it's gonna work out.
Okay, so I guess the only concern I have is if the defendant ends up in court, your bailiff or your officer who walks them back into the jail cell, are they gonna have a quick access to a Sallyport? From the, from the booking, from the booking to the Sallyport? Okay, one. Now, how, how far would they be? I'm trying to look, and I couldn't find the, the, what do you call it? The walkway from, from the court back to the, yeah, Sallyport.
I wouldn't know the exact amount of feet in front of you. I don't, she knows the amount? Off the top of my head, I don't know the distance, but there is a secured corridor being provided, so to have access.
There'll be a what, sir?
A secured corridor.
Oh, okay, good.
Part of the planning?
Yes, he had some changes that we took care of.
He made changes, and he approved the final changes, or?
Correct.
Okay.
Judge President?
Yes.
Were there the other judge, were they informed?
Uh, yes.
They were? All of them? Okay, all right, okay, man. So with that being said, Chief, you looking at the plan?
Yes, sir.
You're okay, all right. Any other questions? That's the only thing I got. No? Is there a motion approved?
To move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next item on the resolution, we have consideration and action pending on the resolution approving the municipal maintenance agreement between the Texas Department of Transportation and the City of San Juan. Mayor Commission, this is a yearly renewal, nothing's changed between the tech staff and the City of San Juan, what it is mainly is what the responsibilities are for the city staff and the tech staff, which pretty much is the same.
Questions for Mr. Arhona? If not, is there a motion approved?
To move.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, consideration and action pending on the resolution authorizing City San Juan to enter into interlocal agreement with the county regardless of the implementation of the county's SCOP program. Again, it's a renewal, the same as would be used in before.
That being said, is there a motion approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item is under consent agenda, we have item A and B, consider approval of City Commission meetings, which is March 26, 2024, and April 22, 2024.
This time under consent agenda, is there anything we need to amend or modify?
I'm sorry, Mayor, we also have C and D.
Oh, okay. Amend or modify under consent agenda. If not, is there a motion to approve?
To move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
The next item under executive session, Mayor Commission, we have the City of San Juan, commission will convene executive session according with the Texas Municipal Act, burning Texas statues, including sanitary government, chapter 551071. Tonight, we have a consultation with attorney, discussion and possible action regarding legal issues concerning entertainment for 24, noche de paz. Also consultation with attorney, discussion and possible action regarding possible settlement concerning cause number CO476518M, City of San Juan versus Reggney Construction LLC, Del County, Texas, and the last one is consultation with attorney, discussion regarding the proposed collective bargaining and labor agreement between the City of San Juan's armed police officers association pursuant to section 174 dot 108.
That being said, is there a motion to enter executive?
To move.
I'll second that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are entering at 7:20 PM. We're back from executive session at 8:06 PM. Is there a motion to reconvene?
To move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, under executive A1, at this time, we are taking no action, right? Am I correct, this time? Under executive session two, at this time, I'm gonna make a motion to authorize lead attorney to accept settlement offer, and that's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and under executive session three, at this time, we're gonna take no action, or?
Yeah, we can do it as discussed in executive.
Okay, as discussed, I'm sorry, as discussed in executive session, that's a motion right now, is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This meeting has been adjourned at 8:07 PM.